We're going to call the regular meeting of the board trustees after order at 7:03. The public participating with physical distancing. The board meeting will be broadcasted on Facebook Live. The public may attend the meeting in person but must register by noon the day of the meeting by calling in 204-677-6167 or emailing knot@mystre.net.mv.ca. Trustees and staff, staff and public will need to pre-screen before entering the boardroom. From 7:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., the public will have the opportunity to ask questions by email. All items pertaining to the agenda, questions are to be sent to sdmll@mystre.net.ca. Thank you for your continued support and patience during these unprecedented times. Our Treaty V acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are all signatories of Treaty V and that we reside in the traditional territory of the Nitsloaese regionation. We're all treaty people. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Guido and trustee Thomas Shewski, all in favor? And adoption of the minutes, is there any errors or omissions? Pardon? Anthony Gettle over? Trustee McDonald and trustees Sis, all in favor?
No, no, you asked. Now ask if there's anything.
Oh, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Okay, we have no delegations or presentations. We have no business from the previous board meeting. So we'll go to the superintendent of Human Resources and Paul Caesar.
Written report in your board packages, just a few things I'd like to highlight and see that have been in attendance at a number of work-related events and meetings. I have been, had been working on a human resources initiative that was completed in draft form prior to COVID, however, had the opportunity to do, to present it to the workplace health and, it's a workplace health and safety program. And I had the opportunity to go to the workplace health and safety meeting the other day and present them with the draft document. So at present times, there's an ad hoc committee comprised of workplace health and safety representatives currently vetting the document. When you're looking at a workplace health and safety program, essentially it's a, it's a document in which, a document within a document. So within there, it just kind of overviews all of our health and safety measures. And then within the document, there's hyperlinks to specific things, i.e. there would be mention of fire drills and the legislative requirement of fire drills and, you know, when they happen. And then there would be a hyperlink right to our administrative procedure saying exactly how a fire drill would happen. I mean, things that were in there were the treatment of anaphylaxis. So it would, you know, it would go through medical conditions or be like a, an abstract, let's say in the workplace health and safety program document, within that abstract, you could find more information by simply hyperlinking it to our administrative procedure. So they're in, currently in the process of vetting that, so we'll see how that goes. I did have a couple retirements. Joanne Yurcu submitted her letter of retirement. Ms. Yurcu was employed, has been employed with the district since 1986. The positions she's held within this district include clerk substitute, educational assistant, she was reception at Arty Parker when I was attending Arty Parker, school secretary at Westwood, and she retired from her position here as a district facilitator at the front desk. Also, we've had Gloria Jacobs submit her letter of retirement. Ms. Jacobs has been employed with the district since 1986. The positions she's held in the district include club, or clerk substitute, library clerk at Riverside and Wapinac Schools, 50% accounts clerk, 50% payroll clerk, and she retired from her position of the payroll officer at the SBO. And it has been a longstanding, I'd say urban legend here in the school district that they hired together, so they were retiring together, and that they did. So we wish them well in their future endeavors and their retirement.
I'm just curious for the workplace safety and health, did you happen to put anything in about global pandemics?
There's reference to the pandemic preparedness plan, yes.
Well, just in time, thanks.
Yes, just in time.
Cool, thank you.
On that note, we did have a pandemic preparedness plan back from when we had H1N1 some time ago, but there was no doubt when this hit that there were certainly some, some, yes, yeah, some holes and some things that were coming at us quite extensively that it definitely needed some upgrading.
The superintendent of Educational Services and Programming Report.
I've submitted my report. I'm just going to highlight three things. So over the last couple of weeks, schools have been creating their plans for the level orange critical and level red restricted learning. The provincial expectation is that in level orange blended learning would happen with K to eight and grades nine to 12 would become remote. Remote learning can be computer-based, but a plan needs to be in place for those who are not connected. If parents are not sure about what that means or how it will be facilitated, please contact your student's teacher. In the level red critical, schools would be closed and remote learning applied except to those students from K to six whose parents are considered critical workers. The details of who is considered a critical worker is being created in consultation with Manitoba Education. And the province has informed us that a school may require to go into any of these levels within 24 to 48 hours. So I did attach in my report the information from the Restart Manitoba Pandemic Response System, and this is available online for anybody who is interested. But in here, it talks about the different sectors, and K to 12 is one of the sectors, and it talks about the expectations if schools go into one of these levels. Schools have created their plans, they've been sharing them with their staff, and they're very sensitive because there are changes to the regular school day and people may be reassigned to other classes or there may be some movements. So we haven't shared these publicly, but I just want the public to know that each school has created a robust plan. So the plans are in place if we need to move between the levels. So I wanted to share that. The other piece, we've been working on our attendance, and to date, we have not had any contact with 108 of our students, which that list has been submitted to the province. But when I wrote this, we found three more students. So what's happening is students may have moved or parents aren't feeling comfortable sending their kids to school. So right now, there's a lot of door knocking that's going on. We have our family outreach coordinator as well as our student support worker and our community connector out knocking on doors to find where our students are. So I think that's important for people to know. And lastly, tomorrow is September 30th, which is Orange Shirt Day. We have a couple of trustees who are wearing their orange shirts today, thank you. So this day has become a symbol of remembrance for residential school survivors and their families. The orange shirt represents Phyllis Jack's memory of her experience of residential school. Her story is one of approximately 150,000 children. It is a remembrance for Indigenous students who were taken from their homes, families, and communities to residential schools. Children were taken away from their family's language, values, and security to be trained to be non-Indigenous. The day commemorates the history and legacy of residential schools and the resilience of residential school survivors and their families. All of our schools will be participating in a variety of ways. There's been a walk that happened today at Arty Parker, thanks to Paul, that was streamed live. There'll also be another walk with Arty Parker students on Thursday, and the reason being is that Wednesday is a remote learning day, so we don't have students in school. So we, the school has negotiated between the two days, and Bree Highway has actually planned that. And I just, I want to say thank you to the Friendship Center, they've supplied some food for that, and also we've had some of our dignitaries from some of our Indigenous organizations, MKO, KTC, and MMF, and I believe that TTA has been involved in that also. We will be having some class walks that are happening tomorrow, and there's also a class that's going to be doing a reenactment of the first day of student arriving at residential school. So we'll see how that, that works out. So I just wanted to mention that. And that is my report.
I have one question, is that reenactment going to be live?
No, it's in a classroom, it's a grade four class, so, and yeah, so no, but I will certainly let you know how it works out.
Some of the students are not located in the school, right?
Pardon?
Some of the students are not located in the school.
Yes.
For what approach are you taking with that?
So right now, the students that we have not been able to locate, we're doing the door knocks, we're phoning the different agencies, we're phoning the different communities. Like if we have a hint of where they may be or we know somebody who knows them, we're turning over all the stones to find all of our kids, so. Some of the phones are no longer in service. Some people have moved back to home communities and haven't told us, and some of the schools haven't opened in those communities. So it's really finding somebody who lives in the community who can go knock on their door to see if, you know, that student is there. But we're finding more and more, yeah, yeah.
I actually do have one, just because this confuses me. So at a level red critical, the schools are closed except for K to six for critical workers. So if there's one critical, like a student who works for a critical worker.
We will still provide programming for K to six, and also we've included, we've also included special needs students.
But like within a classroom?
Yeah, and so what we've asked is, we've asked our principals just to go through their list to, because they know their families, to see who would identify as a critical care worker. And incidentally, all educators have now been deemed critical care workers as well as daycare workers. So we're getting that, a more comprehensive list from the province, but right now, we've just asked our principals to identify. And in some cases, we have classes where 60% of the class is, the parents are critical care workers. So we need to know that, so in our plans, we can plan for that.
And Lori, it's only one parent that has to be a critical care worker.
Yeah, just one right now, one can identify.
Now, is that critical care worker or essential worker according to a guideline that's released by the Palace de Presidente?
So what they've done is, it used to be essential services, and now it's critical care.
So it wouldn't include restaurants?
No, but it would include grocery store, people who work at the grocery stores.
Nurses and.
Nurses, doctors.
Teachers.
Yeah, they're going to give us a more definite answer, but right now, we're just working with what information we have. So we're preparing for that. But yeah, that's the question that everybody wants, the definition.
Thank you. The Secretary of Treasures report?
Circulated in your board packages, the expenditure financial report as of September 24th. This was reviewed earlier this evening as well as the finance committee report. This is based on our original 2020, 2021 budget, which now due to COVID is, our landscape is changing tremendously. At this time, we have expanded $3,6,968 to date, approximately 7% of our original 2021 plan. We are looking at, in addition to this regular financial report, developing a little bit more of a robust reporting system for our more realistic day-to-day reality of COVID and where we're tracking expenses in relation to that as well. Because this is not going to be a regular budget year. I'd like to tell you, there's no surprises at this time for finances, but every day's a new hurdle. That's all I have for now.
I have a question. I heard on the radio that there was, the Palistore government was giving millions of dollars to the schools. How, what kind of impact does that have on us? Are we rolling in the dough?
No, we're not rolling in the dough. There's been an announcement of $12 million in PPE, personal protective equipment, given to all of these schools within Manitoba. Of that, there hasn't been a dollar value equated to each division. However, we have here at Mystery Lake, we see an ample supply of masks from the province, two pallets full so far. We have compiled our requirements for face shields, children's masks, adult masks, and we are starting to receive those. Another portion of funding identified is excess funds once we have established and spent our COVID surplus. So within, at the June 30th, at the end of last year, we had some money left on the table from our school budgets due to the pandemic and remote learning and moving away from in class. Once we have exhausted those resources as well as identified and redirected existing budget dollars into COVID expenditures, we have the opportunity to apply for the $32 million funds. Of the $32 million, Mystery Lake gets $487,000 if our application is reviewed and accepted. So there is a lot of dollars out there in provincial news releases. So that's, we're working with the finance committee to bring it down to a Mystery Lake level and identify how it relates to our division and our community. The dollars are based on enrollment, enrollment numbers is how that they've determined to distribute the funds.
So does that answer your question about rolling in the dough, doesn't it?
Yeah, does it ever? Oh, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? On new business? We have the first reading, oh, no, do I read the recommendation first or the first reading?
First reading and then the recommendation.
Okay. A first reading is required for debenture by law 01-21 in the amount of $1,153,000. This promissory note is for the roof replacement at Burnwood School, Public School Finance Project Number MYBURRO20191. Recommendation is that the borrowing bylaw 01-21 in the amount of $1,153,000 be read for the first time. Oh, trustee Olivia and trustee McDonald. Any question? For correspondence, the fall meeting and the regional meetings are all going to be held via Zoom. The dates and times for all the meetings are in my correspondent. There's an e-bulletin too that talks about Orange Shirt Day, which is tomorrow, speaks of the significance of coming together in the spirit of reconciliation and hope for generations to come. Also speaks of the Climate Action Initiative Fund. Where you could be rolling in the dough again. It also talks about how the school boards, as of September 10th, the meetings can be attended fully electronically if and when the public health situation warrants. That's about it for the e-bulletin. Have anything else?
Just put the school lockdown handbook, it's a very good.
Document. And we'll be going over that tomorrow in the admin meeting, but it's got some very good information in it with regards to lockdown and terminology and things to look for and just even your outside surroundings like shrubbery and trying to keep things, the line of sight clear and things you just sometimes don't think about. So yeah, it's a very good document. The document, it was supported by Manitoba School Boards Association, and they, they hired a consultant, and I believe he was a retired Winnipeg police officer, and they did extensive work. He actually came up and did a professional development session with us. So he had a very different, yeah, he's very knowledgeable and had some very, very kind of things that make sense, but you may not think about. So yeah, it's a very good document, if anybody's interested.
I just find it so disconcerting that it's necessary, and I know it's necessary, but nevertheless, it is disconcerting. Lockdown in school.
Now we'll move on to community reports. The Policy Committee Chair?
Well, we're having a meeting in October, and I can't remember the date, but, I don't even know who's on it, actually.
You, yourself, Dawn, and Michelle.
Education and Programming Committee?
Same as you, we do not have any meeting so far, so wait October when it's set, and that maybe we'll speak something later.
Public Relations Committee? So we haven't had any meetings yet, we will this one. Again?
Next month.
Oh, yeah, next month, sorry, in October. Finance, Property, Personnel Committee?
We had our first meeting just before this meeting. Some of the, some of the stuff we talked about is we got the update on facilities work that was done over the past summer. We've got new portable classrooms going in at Wapinac Community School that are still in the process of going in. So that's behind schedule with hope was they would be available by the start of the school year. I think we're still ways from that. Burnwood School is having its roof redone, which is a fairly major project that one is on schedule, should be finished within the month.
End of October.
And the Winter Games Legacy, the funds left over after the Winter Games are fun, were finished, were distributed around the community, like for legacy projects. And the main project that we had was converting the main basketball nets into electric racing in the Orient instead of like having charrel players racing in the Orient. So it's a considerable improvement what it takes to move those things around. So all the elementary schools are done, and Arty Parker already had electric basketballs, so money there was put towards replacing the bleachers, which I have no idea that the shirt looked like they were original to the school, so well worth replacing. You mentioned like money to go for COVID, and we were directed to be decent expenditures last year and to keep track of what, and also expenditures just naturally reduced because the schools were often closed. And the province directed all schools to keep track of how much money is saved. And that money is now available to us this year to apply against COVID-related expenses. So it's not just the amount that the province announced so far, it's also the larger than normal surplus that's available to us. Our Secretary of Treasures going to look at ways of being that separately from our financial reports and be tell how much our costs are actually coming from COVID and what they're being heard from. So hopefully we'll end up by our next financial report. And the school division hired another family outreach coordinator, and that was, that position is being funded in part by the senior executive reduction that the province mandated the school districts go through last spring. And the direction was any savings from it had to be directed back into the school system. So that's how, that's how part of that position was funded. And that's all we have.
Can you remind me how we saved money during COVID? But didn't we have, like, we were fully staffed and then didn't we cut positions or leave people off? Can you just like shake my memory because I don't remember. I remember everybody being fully employed and I know where I worked, nobody lost their job or unemployment, so I'm just curious because I can't remember how we would have saved money.
We were fully employed for a while, but eventually layoffs did happen, and there were also layoffs for the summer. But in addition, the province directed all school divisions to basically stop, stop all funding that wasn't directly necessary to support distance learning, and so we canceled a number of maintenance projects, there were, you know, other things that were canceled.
School spending.
Yeah, you know, obviously support scripts ended.
Right.
So the amount of money saved is not astronomical, but is still quite significant.
But there was no teachers' layoff?
No, no teachers were laid off. I mean, we, we needed teachers to be able to deliver distance learning.
What about TAs? Or what do you call them? EAs?
There was a round of voluntary layoffs. And then there was eventual school day off.
Okay, so I don't remember.
You get savings from no substitute costs or teachers absenteeism or EA absenteeism that you would have normally when school was in session.
Totally. Thank you.
With us being so far through the school year, at the end, it went at spring break when we went to remote learning, we were almost, we were two quarters of the way through our budget. So there wasn't a whole lot of savings, but there was, at the last meeting, we discussed what sort of point happened for the district.
Interesting. Thank you.
And I think the important thing to know is that normally that would have had to go to surplus and it would be inaccessible, we're allowed to carry. And so the province's direction is you are allowed to carry it over to use for COVID-related expenses.
Trustee Connors will serve with Michelle, and we'll move on.
I don't have much to say, but the province has declared September 28th, October 2nd as school support staff are in this meeting. This includes educational assistants, library assistants, technicians, carers, bus drivers, students, school secretaries, and other positions or anybody who support education for kindergarten to grade five. But thank you for your effort.
Please stay safe, and as to those that are in the nauseous speech, please do not make big gatherings. Thanks to the ladies, so please follow their instructions. Please stay safe.
Thanks. I got to see Arty Parker's armchair parade online, so thanks very much, one's hand call for everything you do.
Please, especially people for 20 years old, and what about us? Have people who are my age who are more, all.
Questions from the public about items pertaining to the agenda? Is there any? Is there any? No? No? Do you guys got any? There is no second in-camera session, so we're just going to go to adjournment, I guess? Need a motion to adjourn? Trustee McDonald and trustee Olivera, all in favor?
Okay. It's lit.
Oh, it's 7:33.